Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our April 15th work session. Just a little bit of a comment beforehand. This is a limited work session. We're going to be handling a few different agenda items. But we do have our board meeting at seven o'clock. I would really like to make sure that we're finished with this session at 6:50 so that we have a few minutes to stretch our legs and get collected for our supervisors' meeting. With that said, any public comment? I'm going to ask that we try and keep our public comment to the two minutes. You'll have an opportunity also to speak at the regular board meeting if there's any additional information, any additional information you want to share with us or any other questions. Also, I would request that the rest of the board just try and stay on topic as far as decisions that we're going to have to make for tonight. Nothing's going to be made during this work session, but if we can keep just the decisions that are before us, instead of going over like the larger project for this work session, I would appreciate it. And of course, we can address that at the regular board meeting if you have other parts of the project that you're concerned with. And with that, I will turn over the work session to Mr. Tomko.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to basically start with...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tomko. We'll start with public comments on agenda items. Do you have any public comments? Okay, thank you, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to start, jump right into the PowerPoint presentation. You were provided a copy at your seat. And so I'm going to jump right in here and just show you some quick pictures that I was actually taking this morning or today of the building. Basically, there's the building. As you can see, we're progressing along quite nicely on the site. We have sidewalk all around the building is completed. They are now starting to work on the parking lot and create stone in the parking lot here in the front of the building, between the building and Wells Road. So it's developing and coming along nicely there. My second picture is looking from the back of the admin building. And the foreground here is the gymnasium and the front part of the building, parking lot. This parking lot here with the highlight, I'm showing with the highlighter right there is the parking lot that will serve the courts. And right here, this flat area here is where we're going to have basically six pickleball courts in the back, two basketball courts, four tennis courts, and actually our bocce courts are going to slide in right here in the front. So they're not prepared yet, but they're, that's where they're going to go. So just a quick update on the exterior progress of the building. So I just wanted to then go through and talk about schedule. So basically where we're at, here's, you know, general the milestones and the schedules we've been showing all along. Basically, we are right here at April 15th. Happy tax day, everybody. And basically what this is showing, number one here is right around about May 30th, Skeptin Construction and all the other prime contractors are projecting at least the building itself will be completed. And this is when, when I show this, this first item here is the flooring installation. Our flooring contractor, who we contracted with directly, All Sports, will be able to get into the building to start the installation of the flooring, okay? Including the gymnasium and the multipurpose room floors. There will be some bathroom floors that will be done because they need to be done ahead of time, but that is one item there. So that will start right around the end of May, and they're projecting like three weeks for that work. Couple of items I wanted to highlight is obviously the court complex construction has been going on all along. It started back at the beginning of the builds, the build with demolition and basically preparing the site, leveling the site, moving dirt around. It was a big storage area for a long time of dirt. So we're showing it just progressing along throughout the entire scope of the project, how there's been some stoppage of work. A couple of items that have held that up a little bit was court lighting, which we've discussed a lot about. And one of the reasons why I discussed court lighting was because of the fact that we were looking to obtain a US, United States Tennis Association grant, which would allow us, which would have given us some about $140,000, and I'm going to speak to that in a little bit. And so that, that required us to upgrade the lighting. They have certain requirements for certain categories of play, for tournaments and things like that. So they had, we had gone through their technical review, and we had basically upgraded the lighting that caused a little bit of lead item, time to move and the court's construction to slide. Now, basically what we're showing right here at the end of the court complexes, the court complex itself, the paving and the court, courts will be finished. That includes basically installation net posts and things like that. The bigger item and the time that thing that's going to slide the schedule out a little bit is the lighting itself. Now, basically the pole bases for all the lights are here, so we can get the pole bases installed. And there's one item that I'll be asking you to look at, and I'll speak to it in a few minutes here, is change order for lighting, for the change in poles, which need to be approved, and then we can order those poles. We just don't know the lead time yet on those poles. So that's schedule, that's, that's one item of the schedule that's moving forward, and we don't know where it's going to land yet. Doesn't stop you from opening the building, doesn't stop you from using the parking lots and things like that, but it does, it does, when you're talking about night play on the courts, okay? So I just want everybody to understand that. So when you look at this item, the court lighting installation, it's a to be determined starting soon, and when we actually get the date on, on that stuff, we'll, we'll update you on that. So I just want you to all understand that. The second item on here is the comfort cottage construction. So I know we've been talking about comfort cottage and trying to get this, this project moving forward. We are at a point now, I think, that we have a recommendation for the board with solid numbers, and that's part of this presentation. It will also be, or ask at our regular, the regular board meeting for approvals, and I'll go over all those numbers. And so that also is an item that we're carrying forward. I don't know yet the, the end date, start, end date, but we're, we're pushing forward, okay? The anticipation is, is that it's obviously this year. It's not going to slide next year, and I don't want anybody to think that we're not going to have bathrooms this year. We are going to have, that's what I'm saying, we are going to have bathrooms this year.
This year.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I don't know yet. I'm working toward, working toward that, that, that piece, I know. And that's, look, it's been, it's been things that has just caused me a little consternation as well, so we're working hard on it. Okay, so those are the items. Lighting, court, comfort cottage, and the flooring installation. So kind of right now, we're kind of looking at like maybe toward the end of June as far as building opening, okay? On those, you know, we're supposed to have a new schedule update soon. So again, I just want everybody to understand that as we push forward here on the, on the schedule. So are there any questions on the schedule?
I have a question for you, Dave. The court lighting, I know you were sort of waiting, and I'm grateful for the way things have progressed, progressed and your ability to apply for grants to help with the lighting. Would the courts be able to be available? Can you do everything else except the lighting so people could use them during the daytime in the meantime? So they'd still be accessible, just wouldn't be open in the evenings?
Right, yeah. The courts would be open for day, daily play, daylight play, just not at night, yeah.
So what kind of timing would that be then?
I don't have an exact date on, they're, they're showing basically the, the May 30th where the paving, the courts, the fencing is done and ready to go along with the building, okay? They haven't slid, no one told me that that, that has moved forward. So the courts would follow the same type at the end of May for...
Does that include nets up?
Yes.
Everything, so if kids wanted to go play basketball, someone wanted to play pickleball or...
Actually, I do take that back because our contractor, but they, that goes hand in hand, is actually Miller Sports, our contractor, will probably be in a little bit before that to do the nets and things like that. So that's my assumption, is that toward the end of May, early June, those courts would be complete along with the building.
That's great.
When then the flooring can start inside the building, but the outside would be done, and they'll be doing more.
I mean, I know you're juggling a lot. I just was trying to...
Yeah, and again, that's really what...
There's a lot of pieces for us to follow too.
That's what that's showing right there, that, that basically all these items, the items that I added in is the court light and the court comfort cottage and basically the flooring installation, which are the items that have to be pushed forward.
Why? Why, the comfort cottage was, was anticipated to be open for the concert series this summer?
It was.
What happened?
Completion of plans and execution of contracts. That, that's what it is. I mean, we didn't have, we had no, we had general estimates from contractors, but they were, we don't have executed contracts for them to start.
So one of my concerns, and we've seen it with Central Park in general, is that the play areas are available as soon as school's out. I think we've had summers before where we had to do work at Central Park, and it kind of closed off parts of the park for kids to come and play. Is any of the lingering work that we have on our schedule that goes past mid-June, is that going to affect access to Kids Castle or the other, other areas, Central Park?
No, I don't foresee that, 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 and even impact of, obviously besides the impact of parking, it won't impact our, our operation for our concert series either as well. Except for, well, I take that back, except for that area of construction for the, for the bathrooms.
Okay.
Which will be maintained, will be contained, okay, to where, where the work is now, okay? Or where it will happen. All right, any other questions on the schedule?
So the parking then, will they have to park up on New Britton Road? Is that where people are going to be parking?
Yes, that's our plan. We have alternative plans for parking, and we'll be able to meeting internally discuss that soon, actually in a couple of weeks to make sure we're covered.
But that is for events in the park, correct? Like during concerts and things like that?
Correct, for concerts, correct.
Okay. I'm just thinking of like end of school, when they bring a bus, a couple busloads of kids sometimes, some of the, I don't know if anybody, they still, I don't know if they still do that anymore.
We do do that, but we can also control it. So with registration, previously we, we, during construction had curtailed that for the rentals of the Kids Castle and stuff. So that'll be determined by availability of parking during the week and availability that the Parks and Recreation Department sees fit.
Okay, so just to be clear, end of May, the court should be paved. You'll be inside the building with the flooring done? Is that correct?
Flooring will start in May.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Flooring will start in May.
Flooring will start in May, but the courts should be paved by then?
That's what the schedule shows, correct.
Do we have anything built in our contracts that they have to meet to these dates?
We've long passed our completion date because of delays. We've long passed that. This is, this is not a delay to base, and, and any fault of the contractors. That's not, you know, there's, there's been delays on our end for making decisions and change orders and, and things that we've done to, to cause delays. So the contractors, and there's been weather, there's been some weather delays, but not major, but still. There's nothing that I, we've seen of their fault, that they're not pushing forward per their contract. They're, they want to get in and get, they want to get this project done just as much as we do.
When does school let out? Do you know, Jen?
I don't remember, it's mid-June.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Probably second, second week in June, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Where, I'm sorry, where, where are the porta potties going to go then? So are they all going to be moved, or what, what happens to that?
I think we can address, well, the porta potties are generally going to stay in the same area that they're at right now. They will move slightly out of the work zone area that if we need to, we can shuffle the porta potties around. I don't have a specific answer for that, but we can do that.
And did you, was there any upgrades or any cleanup to the existing bathrooms that we have? I know we talked...
We had nothing funded in 2025 for modification to the existing pavilion bathrooms.
We talked about just cleaning it up, not even modifications. But I thought there was...
Based on direction from finance and our current financial picture, we don't have any funding available for any, any work to be done in Pavilion One bathrooms at this time.
Disappointing, okay.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to continue with my PowerPoint here. Okay, thank you. So the next slide I want to show you here is basically a, and while it's got a lot of numbers in detail on it, I think it's important to show everybody where we are with change orders on, with the general contractor. So just to remind everybody, this is a multi-prime contract, which means we have, we have five contracts, a general contract, electric, mechanical, and plumbing. We're fortunate enough that one contractor handles, but has two contracts, and that's Herschberg Mechanical. This is for Skeptin Construction, for the general construction of the project. And you can see their original amount was, contract amount was 7.293 million. We've, this board has, the board has approved G, change orders one through 10. You can see highlighted here, and basically also change order 11. As we move forward to this presentation and into the regular meeting at seven o'clock, one thing I'll be asking the board to do is rescind change order number 10 for site paving for $348,000. As you'll, as I go through my presentation, you'll see that we have a budget shortfall, okay? And one of the reasons we have a budget shortfall is the cost of the, of the bathrooms, okay? So it's the old adage, what are you going to do? Are you going to cut scope or are you going to increase the budget? Okay, so our recommendation is to cut scope. And one way to cut scope is to reduce the cost of the capital project that we had in for site paving in, in Central Park, which we had budgeted at $415,000. We received a change order for 400, or for $348,000, and that's this number right here. And we've received a new proposal, and we've cut that back for only $90,000. So I'm going to ask for rescinding of change order number 10 and for the approval of change order number 12, and we're going to basically take the difference of the 348 and the 90, I'm rounding up to 90,000, and use that toward the funding of the bathrooms.
So was that the loop that we had talked about repaving?
Correct, that would have been, that would, the original plan was to do the entire Loop Road, the front parking lot here where the construction trailers parked, and all the parking lots.
Right.
Okay, and we got that, that cost of 348,000. Because we need that money, we are looking to basically just do the front parking lot here and the Loop Road from Wells Road to the Public Works entrance, just past the Public Works driveway entrance, okay? So it's, you know, like, I would say a third of the Loop Road, approximately, okay?
Yep.
So those are, that's, that's one item here that I want the, everybody to be aware of. The other change order that I'll be asking the board to approve tonight, and you can see it here, is change order 13, credits for the TV alcoves, multipurpose room cabinetry, multipurpose room ceiling structure, and the painted, the exposed panel sub-framing that's in the gym. That totals, that, that amount right there totals basically like $1,300 that we would owe to Skeptin. So it's a deduct, there's two deducts and two adds, it's a 13,000, or $1,300, okay? So I'm going to ask the board to do that. The other items that we're carrying as far as change orders are these three items at the bottom. Minor ones is drywall revisions, some paneling, wood wall paneling revisions, which we're trying to, to address. And the one at the bottom here, which we're anticipating painting is going to be a credit, is site grading and sidewalk revisions. We've basically kind of looked at, again, we've been looking at the budget and the project and trying to determine to stay on budget and to do that, where can we, could have eliminated things in some sidewalk areas and things like that where we thought we could do that. So that's going to be part of another proposal coming up. When, I don't know, I do have it say it's shown as pending on 4/15, but that's wrong. I apologize, made a mistake there. So right now, basically Skeptin's contract, if, if all these were approved, is 7.522. Is that's where it's at, okay? Any questions on Skeptin's change orders and their kind of budget where they stand?
How much left do we have, if any, in the...
I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
You know, put a pause on that, okay? These are the other three prime contractors. You see Herschberg Mechanical has no change orders right now. Basically, also Herschberg Mechanical is also doing the plumbing. They have had two change orders, just shy of $10,000. Another, the final general contractor is, is US Solutions, who's the electrical contractor. Here is their change orders to date. G, electrical contractor 03, or EC 03, is the one I'm going to be asking the board to approve tonight as well. That, that contains a couple of items. Number one is basic revisions of the bathroom exhaust fans at eight, for, for 8,000. The kitchen hood circuitry, which is, this is the final piece of the kitchen vent hood, you know, puzzle there at 5, 5,400. Some, some modifications, so some conduits for some smart screens and TVs at 1,600. And then the big one is the, the sport court lighting poles. Again, part of that USTA grant was that we had to have certain lighting levels in the courts, and we basically changed the poles from 25 feet high to 35 feet high. So that's the big one right now at 38,000. So that total of those four items is going to come in around $54,000, which I'm going to ask the board to approve at the next meeting. That would take basically their, their total for all their change orders, 240,000, or basically in, in total, 1, 1.69 million dollars. Any questions on those items?
Yes.
Okay.
The sport court light poles, I think it was through, two or three meetings ago, we approved $60,000 for the lights for the...
That was the, that was this $86,000, if you see EC 02 was...
Yeah.
Lighting, that, those were the light, the lights themselves, the head. We had to upgrade the lights themselves, and then we had, didn't have the pole numbers yet, and actually we got a higher number. We actually were sitting on about a $50,000 change order for the poles, and instead of going with, we just basically went from aluminum to steel poles that dropped the price down to 38. So we've knocked down about, you know, we knocked down about $12,000 off that number there.
Because we approved it anticipating that, knowing, well, anticipating that the grant would be awarded.
Correct.
So we needed to allocate 60 something thousand dollars.
Correct.
So is that number, those poles, are they in this mix here? I mean, that, I'm not quite understanding what, what was the $60,000 that we approved?
Just the light.
No, the, the lighting, the, I don't know where you're going, I don't understand the $60,000.
I think the clarification, Dave, for the board is that the lights and the poles are two separate things.
Yes.
And, I mean, most of the time you would, I think you're going that the light and the pole would go together.
I would think...
And I...
In this case, it doesn't.
I specifically remember, you know, a light item that we had approved 60 some thousand dollars, I forget the exact number.
Okay, can you bring my spreadsheet up, Ed, for a second or something?
Doesn't matter, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that number is in this mix here, and not, this is not in addition to what we've already approved for lighting on the sports courts.
No, no. EC 02 is for the lighting, and the foundations was $86,000. All the change orders are in this spreadsheet, and that's probably inclusive of, of that number because there was the foundations and the light pole, the lights themselves, the light fixtures that go on top of the poles. And then now we have a change order for 38,000 for the poles.
I recall it was an additional amount of money because it was necessary in order to apply for the grant.
Exactly.
Correct.
Yeah, and it's probably...
To anticipate, exactly.
Right, so I just want to make sure that number or that, that, that task, those tasks are incorporated in what you're...
Everything you see in front of you on the screen and what you have is, is all the change orders that you've approved inclusive of that item. So I just want, that's what I wanted to clarify first. It wasn't clear that I was doing that, so that's where I, so again, I may as, we'll be asking for approval on, on EC 03 at the regular board meeting, okay? So basically, this is a summary. Now, it's a little bit of a, I want to back up here and just make one thing clear, clear. The, the general contractor subtotal for all their change orders is 200,000, 200, almost 230,000, and if you go to the summary here, you'll notice it's dropped down to 140. And the reason for that is that contractually, we gave them work in, to pave, that increases their, their base bid or their, their contract amount. But when I do the math to make everything work in this spreadsheet right here, I pull that number out of it and capture it somewhere else and coming up in a few slides, okay? So I don't want anybody to look at this and go, where did that $90,000 go? I'm going to show you, it's 89 and change, but it's 90,000 rounded. I'll show you that in a few minutes, okay? So, but right now, so Nancy had asked where we're at as far as contingency. We are carrying to 300,000 right now. We basically have about $9,000 in contingency left, which was captured inclusive in the budget, and I'll show you that as well. But that gets gobbled up pretty quick, okay? When we're talking about the overall scope of the project, including the other capital projects that are included in the bond borrowing. So this is summary of that, so of the, what I just went over, okay? Next item here, this is all the owner-supplied items that were outside those four prime contracts that we basically, you have authorized throughout the duration of the project. The items at the top are, and basically, here's the items down the side is all the information and items that are included in the budget. This is their budget amount in this column, the budgeted column, and then the actual is actual costs of those. You'll notice that the approved items from furniture down to the bocce, well, down to testing and inspection, you've already approved, starting back in February or back in 2023, going down to even last, last meeting, okay? So one thing I want to note here is there's, there's a couple items at the top that we have in the budget. Interior signage, IT, artwork moving, LED message board and commissioning. There's your total. I don't have proposals yet for those, we're working on them, we're working on the interior signage. We have, but I put a placeholder in here for those because I want to carry those items into the mix of what the overall budget looks like, okay? We don't have to do these. If, if again, we have to cut scope, we can cut $30,000 out of the budget for an LED message board, which helps us in the backend, okay? But what I wanted you to show you down here is this, is that we had budgeted $1.5 million for owner-supplied items, and right now we're sitting at a budget of 1.4. A lot of these came in under budget, as you know, a few were over. One items, three items we didn't carry, we had originally was a flag, the flagpole at $4,000, the blinds at 10,000, and our second year of risk insurance, which kicked in in April. Now, that auto renewed, and that's for 12 months, but it's prorated. So let's say the project ends and we have to use six months of it, we'll get six months back, okay? So even though we had to pay for the, the 12, the full year, like any auto, like any policy, we'll get reimbursed unused portions for the builder's risk insurance, okay? So the three items in the bottom were not originally in the budget, but we're carrying them forward as part of it. So is there any questions on the owner-supplied items in, in this slide?
As part of the discussion at the meeting, removing some of these things?
Yes, I'm, I want to kind of paint a picture of where we are financially and then how we're going to now. But the items that we've approved, items, there are items we need and, and the items that have to kind of stay there. The items I think that we can talk about, and honestly, at the top here is, is obviously artwork and moving support, which we had kind of placeholders. I don't think we're going to spend that money. Obviously, commissioning is part of some of the contractor's proposal anyway, so I don't know that we're spending $30,000. That would kick in, and let's say if we thought that potentially there were some other issues that we thought that we had to address that maybe a contractor wasn't doing, and we wanted to look at our own commissioning and try to balance, do things in the building. So I think we're going to see some savings in the 30,000 for the commissioning and the 12,000 for the artwork and the moving support, so that, that's going to help us as well, okay? The, I think the item that's on the chopping block potentially is the LED message board, okay? These are other projects that are funded by the bond revenue, and this is where the bathrooms kick in, plus the other things. So as you all know, that this is not just a community rec center, it's a community rec center and Central Park improvements, which includes the courts, the comfort cottage, as well as we had in here, the dog park paving, as well as Central Park Loop Road. So these items here, the $50,000 was budgeted for, for the dog park paving. I, I, you know, we've, we're kind of need to do that, and we're carrying that forward, and that's going to be part of the road program. Though there is, you know, there was discussion with the, the finance department staff that, that this, that project could potentially be funded out of a, a different revenue source than, than the, the community rec center bond borrowing, okay? If we had to, needed to use that money.
I would support that, Dave.
Okay, that's number one. Number two is the, obviously... Number two is the, obviously, repaving of the Central Park Loop Road. So remember I said that ninety thousand dollars that I pulled out of, of Skeptin's, you know, change orders? This is where I'm carrying that line item now. So basically, we had budgeted four hundred and fifteen thousand. We now have, we're basically at ninety. So we've got that difference now that we, we can use and plug into the, into the equation to help us kind of keep, keep on budget, okay? Then the final number here is the bathrooms and I'll explain this. So we are going to move the bathrooms forward as a change order to the, to the four, the three prime contracts, or the four prime contracts. And that includes the general contractor, the plumber, mechanical and electrician and there's a line item down here that we have to buy, a, a storage tank.
It's here.
We have estimates from, from the contractors for constructing the bathrooms and, and here, these are the numbers. So basically, the general contractor's number to construct the bathrooms is four hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's a base bid that he's provided. He provided four alternate items in accordance with the design plans for exterior finishes, which I'll talk about in a second. The plumber's number is one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, okay? Mechanical is thirty-two thousand and then basically the electrician is one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and then five thousand. So the budgeted amount for the bathrooms was six thirty-three. Right now, based on a base bid of everybody, and that doesn't include these alternates, is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the bathrooms. So now you can see where we have a funding gap, okay? We do have alternates for facades and I'm going to go over those ideas and samples and show you pictures of the facade that we can do, but they come at a cost. And so you can see up here, to just basically do an all stone veneer on all the four walls of the, of the Comfort Cottage is going to cost us an additional fifty-five thousand. To do a stone veneer on the bottom half plus siding on top is forty-two and to do only basically one wall with stone and then split face block, twenty-five. So we, we captured those numbers for you to, to kind of look at and, and decide how we want to move forward, okay? So these are the other projects that are in the bond borrowing. Any questions on these numbers?
Yeah, we look at the numbers, are there pictures of, of the choices?
We're going to, in.
Okay, it's coming up?
Coming up, yep. I'm, got you covered, I hope.
Oh, I see.
Okay, yes. So, right here is, this is our overall project budget and this is really where the rubber hits the road, okay? So basically, what I've done now is we captured the dog park in here, we've captured the loop road paving and we've captured the budget for the community rec center courts and the restrooms. And basically, our budget for those items was thirteen point three seventy-eight million, okay? That's the budget. The actual is coming in at basically fifty, the ninety and all the other pieces. And one item I want to kind of highlight here is engineering and design fees at a million dollars. A lot of that is obviously our, our budget for our engineering, but it also includes all the grant support that we've received for the RACP grants that we've had to do. That includes our owner's rep services, that includes our inspection and testing that we have to do. So that's, that is basically where we're at right now. That's actuals, it's a, it's really kind of where our, our top end budget is. I, I mean, I hope it doesn't go more than that, but that's kind of where we were budgeted at, so that's a little more of a budget number. And, and just in general, that, you know, rule of thumb is that, you know, your design fees are always typically like ten percent of your total construction costs, though we kind of didn't really put a placeholder there, okay? So I want you to show you that. So basically, based on this right now, we're over budget. If we kind of do the bathrooms at the base bid at seven sixty-eight, we're over budget by seventy-three thousand dollars, okay? And that's taking that credit for that paving, that, you know, basically knocking the paving down to ninety thousand dollars. And, and that's due to a couple of things. One is these, basically, the, the two lighting numbers, eighty-six thousand dollars and thirty-eight thousand dollars. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in lighting changes that we anticipated because we were going to get the grant. Well, the good thing is we got the grant. I mean, we, we have that, we've got the letter and I think it was in your packet. We received a hundred and forty thousand dollars from USTA, United States Tennis Association for cost to go toward the construction of the tennis courts. So that we have the hundred and forty thousand dollars to go to, and that's this line item right here, this one forty. That one forty going toward the construction of the courts now frees up money to allow us to do the other, you know, move that money to cover other costs in the project, right? And one of them is the Comfort Cottage. So the other piece of this is that we, we were kind of encouraging, heard encouragingly that we're going to receive another twenty thousand dollars from USTA Middle States as well. As a matter of fact, we kind of did our pre-app and they said, looks great and Karen just submitted the, the application and I think that kind of verbally we were like, this looks good, but nothing to, nothing official yet, but it's, it's, it's a positive. So with that, when we plug those numbers in, that takes us now down to under budget by, by eighty-six thousand dollars, okay? So you kind of see what we've done, we've kind of dropped that down, okay?
Is that with the contingency money?
The contingency money has always been in here, okay? It's always been in the twelve point, actually in the thirteen, the thirteen point three seven eight, it's been there. It's not like it's floating out there, we can drawl out of it.
Okay.
It's been part of the budget.
Thank you.
It's just was, we're, you know, eating away at it with all the change orders, okay? So you can see what we've done was we've cut the scope on the paving, okay? We're trying to basically, there's, there's a lot of change orders we've said no to, okay? There's stuff that's come across the board, stuff that Skeptin has recommended that we just said we don't have the money for, that, and it's stuff that just is good stewardship when it comes to facilities management that we just couldn't do. Example, it's they, they said, hey, we, ten thousand dollars, we'll seal all the concrete in front of the building so that you don't have to worry about it, you know, salt eaten away at it and it protects it, UV protection, that kind of thing. I said, we don't have the budget for it. There were other items that we talked about, we just, we kept saying no, and that's why we also looked at sidewalk and, and said, let's not do this because of the budget. So that's what, so we're anticipating some more. So I'm hoping that, that, you know, with, with the other change orders coming in at this eighty-six gets, stays there. Again, if we don't do that message board, that number jumps up to like one twenty-one, right? Because we're, we're pumping back in another thirty-five thousand dollars into, into the, this thirty-five thousand back into the, into the bottom line, okay? So.
Dave, can I just ask a question about the loop? Because I appreciate you're trying to save money.
Mm-hmm.
But what's the condition of the loop now? Just because of all the trucks and all the construction, there's going to be a part that's real smooth and I don't know what that, the rest of it looks like.
It's not terrible, I mean, it's not perfect, I mean, it needs to be done. But if that's, you know, the, the.
Like on the robotics program, if you had to run it, like where would it fall in the immediate, like we'll be doing it next year or?
No.
Yeah.
No, I think we can't ignore it. We ha, I think that if, if, if we're going to have to cap, do a capital project, that within the next two years, we would want to make that a capital project to pave Central Park. Obviously, I know the anniversary is coming up and, you know, so it's, but by the same time, it's, you know, the budget is a concern. But I mean, as far as, it's not crumbling, is it great? No. I would say it's like average, you know, right now. We did some work in there, so, look, we'll maintain it. That's what we're going to do. Like everything else that we have, we will maintain it to the best of our ability for right now until we can, we can pave. Now, the other question is, at the end of the project, if there is a surplus, do we consider more paving, right? That's always a thought. So, but I think at this point, you need to kind of take a wait and see kind of attitude, right? Let's see where the numbers come in, let's see how they look before we get into, well, let's pave the whole thing and we've spent that money and all of a sudden now we have, we've got other things that come in that are, are driving some costs. I hope that we're kind of over the hump here as far as, you know, in the downhill slide, coming into about thirty days into May and saying the building's done, things like that, but that's, you just never know.
Okay.
I, I keep thinking it's going to end and it's, I always get hit with something else and it's been a little, been a little frustrating, to say the least, sometimes, but we're, we're trying to control the costs as best we can. And it's going to happen. It happened with this building, when we did this building, it just, there's this unforeseen circumstances that occur.
Okay, so.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. This is our drawdown schedule and this is something we want to bring up. Basically, it shows that we've got a funding problem coming in June, right? And basically, further in our agenda, in section three of our agenda, when we talk about grants, timing and, and interim funding, this is when, you know, the kind of the funding gap will be addressed. But it's up here in, in the overall agenda item and you can see where we go right in June, where kind of we run out of bond money and, and, you know, our grants don't come in, so how are we going to do that? And Stephanie will be speak, speaking to that in a bit, okay? All right, let's talk about the Comfort Cottage project. And again, here's just a quick reminder of, of basically the project where it is located in, in Central Park near the amphitheater, just down toward, going down toward Kids Castle. We moved it up a little bit, about a hundred feet, primarily again, cost. If we would have had it down further where it was, there's more site work and more money. So that was a little bit of a decision to move it up a little further, right at kind of the intersection of the walkway that runs in front of the amphitheater and the walkway that runs down to Kids Castle. It's flatter, basically, it's, it's right at the intersection, right by the parking lot, so kiddos can go there before or after coming or going to Kids Castle, plus also to its right in the vicinity of, of the amphitheater. So, and I looked, I measured off, it's about three hundred and fifty feet from Kids, from Kids Castle and, you know, about four hundred feet from Pavilion One. So it's right in the middle there. So I just want to remind everybody what location, okay? Quickly go through just some of the, the design parameters here. Obviously located in Central Park, it's a twenty-eight by thirty-two building, six bathrooms, ADA compliant. It's going to be accessible. It's only going to be heated, basically a covered front porch area, twenty-three by ten, and asphalt shingles on the roof, nothing crazy, like we're not doing a metal roof and basically a entire block building that is pretty much, we're trying to make it maintenance free so the guys can come in, I think I said this in the past, if there's a mess to be cleaned up, they can go with a hose and hose it out. There's going to be hose bibs in each bathroom, they can basically connect right to it instead of having to run a hose outside and basically clean up the, clean, clean them and maintain them. This is quickly a, the plans that were prepared by Panoni that the contractors received to, to basically bid off of and these are just, I just grabbed the elevations of, of them. This is basically is the front elevation that would, if you have your back towards the amphitheater, Kids Castle will be to your left, you'd be looking at it, the, basically the covered front porch area, and I'll have a floor plan here in a second to show you. This front wall here, which is, faces west, has, will have a water fountain on it. This is the rear door, which is for the maintenance utility room and then basically each elevation on the side, this, this area facing would face the amphitheater, this side would face the amphitheater, there's the two side elevations, all the doors, pretty straightforward building. So the floor plan, which is showing six ADA compliant restrooms, the green arrows represent where the doors are, the red represents the basically the, the bathroom building itself. There's a utility corridor in the middle, the red arrow is the entrance from the util, into the utility corridor. The orange basically is the overhang kind of pavilion space and the orange arrow points to where the water fountain is located. Just kind of give everybody the lay of land on the floor plan.
The orange area would be the, the spot facing the amphitheater?
Correct. So it serves, you know, as, as a bit of a, you know, gathering space and a shelter if the storm blows up, somebody can, you know, like being on a golf course, you can run in, run over there and take cover. So that's part of it. So Panoni designed these and basically what I want to show here, and I think I've, I don't know if I showed this to board, this before, but this was basically a design that Panoni had done for Marple Newtown, Marple Township in basically their restrooms. Basically the same idea as ours, except bathrooms, it just has four restrooms, there's two on this side, there's two on the other. We'll have a third door here, or three doors on the other side with an overhang. We won't have a service counter, but they have a bottle filler, we'll have a water fountain here. This is a thirty by thirty-eight building, so a little bit bigger than ours. We will have two columns, two, two supports, not three. And basically, this is what, what kind of we're modeled after a little bit. Asphalt roof, this is split face block, this is what our base bid is, is priced off of, it's the most economical, the, the, like it or not, unfortunately, the, the nice part about split face block is you lay it, you, you get it done and you, you're done. You don't have to come back and face it, you don't have to paint it, you don't have to, you know, cover it, but that's, there's a cost to doing exteriors and I'll talk about those in a second. Skeptin's base bid because of the general contract that they actually be building this is this, the split face block color choices, that's in their four hundred and seven thousand dollar estimate, ooh, sorry. Basically, hold on one second, I've got a thing that popped up here. This is the three, the color choices for their stock block. Anything more, if we wanted to go to a standard or premium colors, an upcharge. So this is, these colors are color choices on the base bid that was provided by Skeptin in their four oh seven number. Alternate exterior choices, and this is alternate number one, is entire building in veneer stone. The veneer stone would match the building, the, the admin building here as well as the community rec center. The upcharge to do the entire building in stone is fifty-five thousand dollars, okay? So take the seven sixty-eight we have already and add fifty-five thousand dollars to it, okay? And that, that gives you your stone, you know, your, your, basically your building wrapped in stone. And I pulled some examples here, and your second alternate, alternate choice for an exterior finish is veneer stone, that's thirty-six inches high and basically siding above that, that's an upcharge of forty-two thousand dollars on top of, of your, your costs. And basically, the final, where I took the building and tried to say is basically one wall, the western wall would be wrapped in stone and then your, your rest of your building, three other sides would be wrapped in, in your split face block and that is a twenty-five thousand dollar upcharge. So it was my rudimentary way of trying to show, you know, the stone because I couldn't kind of find a good picture. But, um, so you have three alternates for siding. Your base bid, you get the split face block, then you've got, you do have three other choices. So I'm going to jump back here to kind of the, the numbers, if you bear with me for a second here, here. So basically, again, three, seven sixty-eight, five five, six sixty-two, you want to go with all stone, you're adding your fifty-five thousand, that takes you up to eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for your bathrooms. You want to go with, you know, just a low thirty-six inches, takes you eight-ten and then the seven ninety-three. I have not, you know, so we're sitting on eighty-six thousand dollars on the, on the positive of, of cash and, you know, any one of these alternates is going to eat into that, you know, number.
Well, what if, what if there's no one, two or three alternative, what do, what do we get?
Your split face block, your, your base bid is a split, that's this right here.
Okay, so.
That is this.
We have different color options.
With those color options.
Yeah.
With the color options.
I, I personally think that the split face block is nice.
I'm fine with it too.
And the standard colors, I, I like it. I mean, I think we do have to worry about our budget and I think it looks very nice.
Which one, can you hold up which one you're talking about?
That one.
That's, can you go, if you go back to the.
Just the sample.
It's this, this, basically this. Now, I, I don't know that, I, I wouldn't recommend doing this band of color. I mean, I, I just doing, if you're going to pick a color, pick one color. I think that the darkest color in, in these stock items, the dark, Stephanie and we're talking about this, is the darkest color is this sandstone color, that's your darkest. I don't know that, I mean, look, I'm not a, a design person color-wise, I'll defer to somebody else on that, but if you wanted to go darker, I don't think we'd go with the grays. But again, I'll defer to somebody else regarding color and, but.
I have a quick question, is there any maintenance difference between the split rock versus the others, just out of curiosity?
The siding, yes. I mean, it would be, they're proposing a hardy board siding, which is a cement board, which has a longer life to it, but still there's, you know, it depends if you're going to get a stock color, their, their factory applied paints, they do last longer, but if you're going to paint that in the field to match a certain color, that, that there's maintenance there. We actually did, just to give an example, we did hardy board siding on the amphitheater and we painted that in the field, it needs to be repainted. If you go out there now and take a look at it, it needs to be painted this year and we actually will be painting it this year. So there's some maintenance, so.
I don't like the.
Not really, I mean, the stone. So there's some maintenance, so, I don't like the, not really, I mean, the stone, you know, obviously, the, the split face block or the stone, there's, there's not much maintenance to them. The siding, ye, yes, um, we also try to drive out, you know, cost, and instead of going with the hardy board, up here in the gable ends, we said, "Okay, what if we right now just went with, you know, real high-end vinyl siding?" Because vinyl siding has come a long way when it was far as looks, I mean, you get vinyl siding that looks like board and bad, and you get vinyl siding that looks really good, and right now, to get a building and get it operational, you know, those are the things that I'd sacrifice to get, you know, a building built.
Is that, is that, isn't hardier board a stronger material when storms, though, than-
It is. It also comes at a cost, I know, because-
Well, I'm just saying, you get one bad storm, and we've, we've had a couple, we had a tornado and some urking.
Well, we have insurance as well.
I, I, I'm just going to say, I like the split rock, but I like the band. I think it looks a little more, rather than a big brown blob at the bottom of the hill, I think it'd be nice to have the band. That's mine.
I kind of like the band, but I don't know what the others think.
Yeah.
I like them all the way in.
Yeah, that's just mine.
I don't like it all, but I've got to have a choice. What, what were you saying about the vinyl? Is that, is that an alternative here?
Right now, it's in the base bid. So this gable end, the, oh, I'm sorry, I keep pointing at my, on my screen, but it's not up there yet. Wait, I'm going to have Ed, right here, the gable end of the building, right now, we said is we'd do that in, in vinyl.
That's where you're going to put it?
Yeah, and also, up inside here, in, up inside, the, the roof in here, as you walk in, it peaks, it's not flat, and we were going to do wood in there, and I said, "Let's just do vinyl siding in there," because, you know, vinyl vented roof just because of expense, okay? Again, we're just trying to drive cost out of these things as much as we can.
Dave, you also explained to me that if we do one of the other stones on the building, it's going to be like a, a base split, it would have that split face rock or block buil, it would be a block building, and then you put like the veneer stone and everything on it, correct?
Yeah.
So you're like doing, you're covering it twice.
Yeah, but then when you're-
This way, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Stefan, I may talk over you. Um, yes, if you're going to put veneer stone on, you're going to do a center block building and then attach the, the, the rock, the veneer stone to it, but it's not, it's, it's basically plain center block, okay? It's not decorative split face block. It's cheaper, but still, again, think about it as that you've got to come back and refinish it.
So are we going to give you direction now, or do you want to, are we going to talk about it during the regular meeting?
I mean, we can discuss it now, or, you know, obviously, it's, but I, I know what we're trying to do is, is get, you know, get, get it off-center, get it moving, so-
Well, let, let's carry that decision to the regular meeting, seeing that we have a couple more agenda items and, because that, that is part of your, your presentation in general.
Quickly, quickly, I want to just go through, and this is, if my screen comes back up here, just recapping for everybody here, the grants and the awards. So obviously, all the RACP grants, the DCNR grant here, and, you know, carrying the new USTA grant at 140,000, and the pending $20,000 for the, the Middle States grant, okay? That's that. I have some robotic stuff, but if we have to cut that, I certainly can cut that piece. So I think we need to jump to the, the grant timing and, and alternate-
Yes.
The gap funding a little bit here.
And Jamie Doyle from PFM is available, I believe, as well. But part of the grants is the timing of them, and the requirement is the project needs to be completed so that we can then submit everything and get the grant reimbursement in a timely manner. And there's a lot of paperwork on the backend to, to do that, a lot of information. Part of the RACP was always, do you need a bridge loan? And when we, back in '22, when we got those grants, we did not, but at this point in time, we do need what I would like to call a grant anticipation note that will cover us on an interim basis while we finish this project, and then get the grant money in and just reimburse it pretty quickly. And Ken and Anne Marie are here, and we've been talking to PFM, who typically would take care of this for us. And there's information, I believe, that was sent out with the packet, that pretty much gives you, you know, the information and what we need to do to cover those expenses in the interim. That includes the USTA grants as well, they don't give them to you kind of upfront, you get a portion, but you have to do the project, get it done, get reimbursed. So they're all reimbursement grants. So there's a timeline that we would authorize her to get to the market to be able to get us all the information, and we would be able to do a settlement and have the money available in June for that gap that Dave talked about earlier. So did I miss anything? I know we're on a tight timeframe, so the board has a minute to stretch their legs.
What, what does it cost us in loan repayments to do this?
Or an interest?
Well, that'll depend on what the interest rate, but Anne Marie's going to give us the details.
Yeah, really quickly.
I'm no Jamie Doyle, so, it depends. It depends on the timing of the grant. The way that they're going to structure it is we can pool that money, there's no call date, so if we only need half of that money, then that's, it's 18 months that we have this loan, it's a loan, so we don't have to pool all 2.4. So if we piece it or we get all of it all at once, there's Jamie.
Jamie has appeared.
So that all depends on the interest rate and how much we pool out, and how, how quickly we submit for reimbursement.
So we would potentially be carrying this for, let's say hypothetically, four months of interest that we'd have to pay back?
Is that, is that about right, that we'd-
Probably, I mean, I would-
Six to eight months.
Six, maybe six to eight at the wor, like by the end of the year, hopefully, you know, is where we would be with that.
So on your page, the one that has the new debt money in there, she does have a debt service payment in there on page five, so she does have a $50,000 placeholder, and this is anticipating that we pay, pay it all back by 12/31/2026. So that's our plan, and that could change, like I said, depending on when we pool this money and how quickly we get it back.
Hey, for any additional questions on this, if the board doesn't mind, we can carry it to the next, to the general meeting and have a conversation. I think that's the end of the agenda, we'll go over robotics at some other point in the future. But we also have on the agenda, any public comment on anything, again.
I just want to know the timeline for the, well, I mean, we're just hearing about some of this now, so what's the timeline? Do we have to vote on this tonight to make that decision so they can move forward?
It'll be-
Everything is tonight.
Everything's tonight at the general.
Mm-hmm.
All right, with that said, everybody good? We'll, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll be back in three minutes. Thank you.